Court to this computer. Alrighty, so with that, as just an initial disclaimer, we are not affiliated with the CRC's organizations. We are simply students and individuals getting together to study for the sake of studying. We have no affiliations or relations to any organization for the Springer Hut Publishing Hub. And this is simply for education and informational purposes. Okay. Alrighty, so with that, uh, this section, if you recall, I sent this out to you last week. This is a big section, evidence-based counseling theories and techniques. Um, I hear that this is the one that stunts a lot of people because we can tend to confuse some of the terms with certain counseling theories. For instance, you can confuse something psycho dynamic with persons centered and things like that, just throwing as an example out there. So with that, uh, you guys know pretty much about me. I am a, I do work in Viola, I am a student, but I'll let Andrew go ahead and introduce himself.
It's Kennedy, yeah, so I'm Andrew. I am finishing up my second year of graduate school at UW Stout and set to graduate in spring of twenty-three. So, uh, if everything goes accordingly with the CRC exam, I will be graduating in May.
Awesome, and any names you want to share?
I'm currently working in private rehab with workers comp.
Awesome, pri- private rehab here, so you want to talk about private organizations, corporations? He's your man to talk to. He's a good reference, so alrighty. So with that, uh, the first section that it was was about evidence-based practice. Um, was this yours or mine?
This one's mine.
Okay, I'll let you start.
Alright, did you want to share your screen, Kennedy? Or you're muted, I can't hear you.
I got you, just let me know when you want me to move to the next slide.
Perfect. Alright, so like Kennedy said, uh, for those who haven't looked at the reading, uh, for this topic, the first portion is on, um, evidence-based practice. So what is evidence-based prati- practice? Well, uh, EVP is what I'll refer to it as, is a method that provides a conceptual framework for, uh, integrating the best scientific research, research evidence into the clinical decision-making process made by rehabilitation counselors. We, uh, recently it has been promoted as a professional imperative for providing the best possible services to consumers uh, with disabilities. And we are, as rehab counselors, ethically, ethically bound to evidence-based practice uh, through our professional adherence to code of professional ethics. We can't just provide whatever practice we see fit, it has to be backed up by evidence. So with that, you can move on to the next slide, Kennedy. So within this topic, I'll be covering, um, how to utilize, uh, research within, uh, evidence-based practice. Uh, I'll be covering, um, psychosocial and vocational interventions uh, that we as rehab counselors may use. What psychiatric rehabilitation practices, uh, look like that's evidence-based? And interventions for clinical issues against it, or again, evidence-based. So, in order to, uh, determine if, uh, the practice that you're utilizing, is evidence-based, or if you just want to, uh, locate, um, an evidence-based practice, uh, you've got to come up with first, a research problem. You've got to be able to identify what the problem is that you want to research. And then you want to, uh, find the best evidence related to that question. Obviously, you want to be able to critically, uh, appraise the evidence, utilizing, uh, correct resources, implementing the findings, and then ongoing evaluation of the research evidence to practice. So with that, you can move on to the next slide as well. Uh, to ensure a sufficient match between the client's needs and evidence, counselors may ask themselves the following fundamental questions. What process techniques work best? Um, for whom is the intervention most effective? Are specific interventions better for certain people? And who should receive the intervention or program when and for how long? Obviously, one intervention may work for one individual, but may have a complete different result on another individual despite how evidence-based it is. Before we continue, I do want to say, uh, like Kennedy had already mentioned, this is a heavy content, uh, topic. So, I don't at all try, I'm not trying to breeze through the slides. Uh, my apologies if I come across like I am. I'm just trying to keep our timeframe, um, according to two hours, just because we have a lot of content to cover. So, uh, with that being said, we'll move on to the next slide. So within the psychosocial rehabilitation, I'm sure you're familiar with a few of these, uh, areas. But these are some of the more well-known evidence-based practices um, that we would be identifying in the psychosocial rehabilitation. So we have supported employment, uh, illness self-management, self-help, or support groups, and workplace socialization skills, and I'll go through each one of these as well. Do you want to go on to the next slide, Kennedy? So support employment, this can be, uh, seen in a variety of different ways. But for the most part, it's providing support and finding a job as quickly as possible and support for the consumer, with training and support needed for the job. There's, like I said, there's a variety of different support employment, uh, such as transitional employment services, which is where work adjustment skills are learned in actual work and rehab program contracts. And then, uh, competitive employment as well. If you go on to the next slide, if I can remember it, there's, there's a model that I have listed. So the individualized placement support, uh, model is a well-known, yeah, supported employment model. It focuses specifically on the competitive employment and consumer choice and preference and rapid job placement, like I had stated. The, which is what the primary goal of supported employment is. Other areas that would be considered some support employment are supported self-employment, the clubhouse vocational model, transitional employment, uh, supported education on the job support, uh, customized employment, benefits counseling, and get, choose key models. You can read a little bit more of these, uh, on your own time. There is a little bit of, of information on some of these additional models within the reading as well. But, um, those are just some examples of supported employment. Next slide.
Actually, I have a question. Definitely, so for the group, uh, in your programs, whether you're studying or whether you're actually working, do you implement any sort of supported employment?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, Margaret.
Hi, nice to meet you. My whole life has been supported employment.
Could you share a little bit?
Absolutely, so, uh, for the last eleven years, I've been providing OPWDD and access VR support employment services, including customized employment. And I currently, um, train for OPWDD on support employment and customized employment, uh, for them. So, yeah, I don't know, if anyone has questions, like specific, I've been doing it a long time.
Okay, I'll pick your brain later on then.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, I've been, I, I spend all day on Zoom, training providers for job coaches and employment specialists to-
Oh, oh, you're good, you're good contact then.
Yeah, so, no, absolutely, yes, I work directly with OPWDD and access VR, so-
Yeah, I've, I've, I've worked with them too, so-
Yeah, 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 so any, any placement, assessment, support employment, uh, contact me. In the group, I'm Kitty White because, uh, I don't want, my whole life, I've been doing support employment and people will try to find you on Facebook, so-
No, it's like a, it's like a cop. Ever want to be put on.
Yep, nope, so I stay-
Margaret, what, what is that acronym that you had said you worked for?
OPWDD. The Office for People with Developmental Disabilities in New York State. So, um, and then there's access VR, the Adult, uh, Career and Continuing Education Services Vocational Rehab.
Okay, wow.
We have-
Where are you in New York?
I'm on Long Island, but I, I train all of New York.
Yeah, I'm in Putnam, so-
Yeah, so, um, so yeah, it's our, our state VR and then our, our DD funding source for Medicaid.
Thank you so much for sharing that, Margaret, I appreciate you and willing to come out to give that to us. Cause a lot of us here, uh, some of us are still students, some of us are still transitioning to different positions, so that's really good to know. So thank you for your input, and I encourage anybody, if you have questions or want to comment or something on this, interrupt and do it. I, I encourage it, it's just going to help us. So thank you for your time, I'll let you take it from here, Andrew, and I'll open up the next slide for you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So obviously, as, uh, uh, let's see, counselors to use the EP support as well. Okay, so, uh, if you're utilizing, uh, supported employment, uh, Margaret may be able to, uh, touch a little bit more on this. But you'd be monitoring the vocational progress, vocational outcomes, and, uh, fidelity to EB models. Um, you'd apply the ADA-related work accommodations and work incentive, incentives available to employers. And you would interfere and collaborate with employers to develop meaningful jobs, uh, job supports and job tenure, uh, for consumers. So, this is the, uh, this is the next area now within the psychosocial rehabilitation, the first one was support employment. And now we're looking at the illness self-management. Illness self-management is, uh, a strategy that minimizes the impact, um, of one's disability. Self-management, on the other hand, is, uh, when an individual maintains their health through the collaboration with family and community in support of an intervention team. So obviously, we, we want to be on the self-management part, or part, uh, when maintaining health. It also addresses the psychosocial impacts associated with chronic health management, through various, uh, ways to like, um, psychoeducation, for example. So, uh, we can go to the next slide now. So illness self-management programs, are, uh, obviously used to, um, address the needs of individuals with chronic mental health conditions. The evidence, uh, that supports illness self-management interventions show that mental health symptoms are managed and, uh, the impact of dis- distressing symptoms or relapses have been decreased. And, um, it also reduces the number of hospitalizations or rehospitalizations. And yet to remember too, the people that are, uh, that fall under illness self-management programs are oftentimes individuals that may end up in the criminal justice system. So for these programs to be in place, it's very beneficial for them because it keeps them out of the cr- criminal justice system and it keeps them out of the rehospitalization that many find themselves going through. Next slide. Uh, yeah, so Kennedy, like you said, like, like someone with dual diagnosis, uh, that is, that is true. And we will actually be talking about dual diagnosis later on as well, so. So the management and recovery program is one of the more well-known, um, illness self-management programs. Uh, keep in mind, this isn't just for, uh, mental health, but it, it, it's predominantly mental health individuals that you would find in, uh, illness self-management. It's designed to, uh, address persistent psychosocial impairments that impede individuals functioning and teach to manage illness. Um, includes cycle education, medication management, relapse prevention training, social support training, and coping skills training for symptoms. It's shown to be effective in proving, in improving symptoms, uh, new insight into symptoms, increase in hope and recovery, uh, and gain control of symptoms, and fewer su- suicidal ideations. Uh, we'll go next, I'm sorry. So this is the next area now of the psychosocial rehabilitation, uh, self-help and support groups. You see a lot of these with, uh, outpatient, uh, outpatient treatment, I'm sorry, was that Emily? Was that Emily?
That's my, yeah, my computer keeps freezing.
Oh, okay.
I've said, oh no.
Okay. So self-help and support groups, you see a lot of these in the outpatient treatment programs such as AA and A, uh, Smart Recovery, um, Al-Anon. Uh, these interventions are for people living with chronic health conditions. And they're oftentimes, uh, run by professionals, peers, consumers, and other health professionals that address the barriers and experiences, uh, of persons with disabilities and their families. Keep in mind, this isn't just for individuals, uh, that are, uh, living with a disability, but also for family of members that have the disability as well.
Question, question time. I know Emily, just as a reminder, Emily is going to be hosting a little, uh, uh, like a, like a therapy session for us, uh, in the upcoming weeks. So it's a, uh, Emily, you can explain it better, I'm sorry, I'm tired.
It's called mindfulness-based stress reduction, and it also is an evidence-based type of therapy. It's actually more of a practice because you never, you know, leave, and you do this continuously. Um, but it, it, it's excellent for anxiety and stress, and especially working for individuals who have, um, PTSD. And it, um, the, the, the idea behind it is living in the now and focusing on the moment, um, rather than the past or the future, because you can't do anything about it. And that will help to center you and deal with what's in front of you, rather than worrying about everything else. That's the easiest way I can put that. And I'm going to be ta- doing classes on Monday nights, um, at seven o'clock Eastern Standard Time. So if anybody wants to join, you know, you're more than welcome to. You can extend it to anybody who's in the program that you know that might not be here. It's, it absolutely works. I've seen it work, I've experienced it, it absolutely works to calm you down and to understand what your body's reaction is to stimuli and triggers.
Thank you, thank you for that, Emily. And just for that too, uh, some, for you, some of you as a student or the workers, I don't know what state you live in exactly where you're at, but always keep in mind the types of groups that are out there. So like that, you can refer clients to, like where I'm at, we have groups, but there's a lot more for veterans, but there's not enough for homeless people, not enough for recovering, so, you know. And if family, I think it's very important to get them involved, because if, if anything, to have somebody stable uh, as they're growing, especially if we're self-sufficient or getting employed, they need to have a stable environment. And so with that, getting them into groups, getting them into support stuff for them and their families is just going to help them get better. So something to think about as alerting this.
One last thing is, I do this, um, it's part of my profession, and everything I do is online. So it doesn't matter where you are. You don't have to be in a certain area, you can always just say, okay, well, here it is at six o'clock Eastern Standard Time. If you want to like, give out to anybody else.
Awesome, thank you, Emily. So yes, on that note, um, yeah, if we could, uh, if we could remind the group of that, uh, meeting, that'd be great, Emily, uh, at the end of this meeting. So, awesome. Uh, next, we have workplace socialization skills. This, this evidence-based practice really, uh, shines light on individual psychology uh, founded by Alfred Adler, which is what we'll talk about later. But it's the, uh, philosophy that humans are motivated by socialization. Um, and this would be an example of proof on why, uh, his philosophy, was somewhat accurate. Uh, so training leads to social and relational acceptance, role clarity, and wo- work-related self-efficacy, efficacy, uh, for employees with disabilities. Um, individuals that had low work performance, low, uh, work corporate, uh, cooperation, low help from coworkers. After conducting workplace socialization skills training, uh, there was an increase of, uh, feeling accepted, um, and being, being proud of what they do, uh, being able to identify with their work more clearly, so. And another interesting fact, this practice actually began in the field of human resources. On that note, we'll go to the next slide. So now we're moving into the next section of evidence-based practice, which is in psychiatric rehabilitation. Will be discussing what that looks like in assertive community treatment, family education, or psychoeducation, early intervention for first episode psychosis, and dual diagnosis, uh, we kind of touched on earlier, but go on to the next slide. So assertive community techno- or, uh, community treatment is, specifically for individuals with, uh, significant mental health conditions. Uh, similarly to the illness self-management, assertive community treatment reduces rehospitali- rehospitalization for those who obviously are more likely to end up in the criminal justice system. Um, the nice thing about the assertive community treatment though is, uh, it's multidisciplinary, um, and it's based in the community. Uh, there's a range of treatments uh, for individuals living with these, uh, mental health, um, conditions such as intensive case management, rehabilitation, and support services. Um, it's a bit more structured than the illness self-management, so. We'll go on to the next slide. Family psychoeducation is beneficial to any family, um, or, or that's, uh, that has a family member that has either acquired or born with, um, a disability. It obviously, uh, gives them the education on, uh, the disability. So, and that obviously ranges from a variety of disabilities. It started from family advocacy groups. Uh, obviously with the concern of lack of information provided to families after the onset of a disability. And specifically schizophrenia and, uh, disabilities similar to that are what really, uh, increased family psychoeducation programs. We'll go on to the next slide. So early intervention for first episode psychosis. Uh, early psychosis is a clinical diagnosis within five years of the first psychotic episode or receipt of mental health interventions. So, the interventions that would follow, uh, that first episode could be examples of, uh, kind of behavioral therapy, low-dose medication treatment, psychoeducation, family intervention, problem-solving skills, crisis and case management services, and more too, but this is just a rough list, so. Yep, next slide. Dual diagnosis, like Kennedy kind of mentioned earlier, uh, that's the integration of both mental health and substance use disorder treatments, combined, uh, within the same treatment. So it, it's not, it's not the same treatment necessarily, but they, they happen, uh, at the same time. Um, it's been shown to reduce relapses of substance abuse and mental, mental health and hospitalization and incarceration and arrests, so. Next slide. So this is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say something also, just food for thought. Um, dual diagnosis, I've always known it to mean exactly what you're saying, to have a, to have substance use disorder and a mental health condition. But it can also mean, just, uh, if this comes up in any way, um, uh, having a mental health conditioning and, uh, intellectual disability. So like, I, when I first heard that, I was like, they have a substance use. One of my managers was like, talking about dual diagnosis, and I was like, how did I not read in their file that they have substance use disorder? It's a pretty big thing that I'm missing, I've met them, I don't feel like that. And I inquired and she's like, no, um, you know, it's, it, it could also be this. So just like food for thought, if, you know, generally, and also, it could mean two different things. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, I appreciate that, Margaret, yeah, I, I never heard that before, so-
Yeah, no, me neither, I've always known it to be this in this context, but, um, you know.
Well, hopefully they don't throw a trick question at us on the CRC exam.
Yeah, yeah.
So now that you mention that, Margaret, I'm curious, uh, and if anybody else wants to chime in on this, feel free. What, in her situation, since it, then it may not necessarily be a substance use disorder, but they may have some sort of intellectual disability and a behavior disorder, would you implement IDTT or SUD? That could, I'm almost positive, I could probably get CRC question, so. What would you implement of these two?
Say, say that one more time, you said, you said, if, if they don't have a substance use disorder, but they have the other two?
Yes.
Well, I, I wouldn't imagine you'd use SUD then, you're saying for the dual diagnosis treatment? Correct. I'm assuming the dual diagnosis treatment would involve some behavioral health treatment and some, uh, some skill, uh,
Like DBT.
Skills training for intellectual disabilities. Is that what you'd say, Margaret?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would think, I would think that if it's, you know, if it's, if it's, um, mental health diagnosis and intellectual disability, um, you know, they would probably only really be treated for the, uh, mental health diagnosis. Intellectual disability is just something you need to know for functioning in their life, what their level of independence or functioning is, uh, and you'd probably only really see, um, behavior, um, or they need to be treated for behavior possibly for the mental health diagnosis. So I don't know if they would necessarily need an intervention if they had that kind of dual diagnosis, but.
Most, yeah, most people who have, if not all who have substance use disorder, also have a mental health disorder. I mean, it's very common, I've worked in the field, and I haven't known one person who didn't have a mental health disorder, but there's also acquired disorders. Like if you get into an accident and then, you know, you have, um, um, oh my god, like, um, an anger issue, you know, and it, those are acquired. And it's, I, I would say that it's more difficult and for the individual, but I'm getting ahead of myself.
Okay, I, I get what you're saying, I was just, uh, so, so I guess it sounds like it would be like, they will be going through like an ID, an individual integrated dual diagnosis treatment, so to speak, in, in some retrospect. Would necessarily be SUD, it'd be like, just here.
I would say if there is a dual diagnosis treatment for, uh, two disabilities that don't include SUDs, it would, it would incorporate treatment that would be relevant to those two disabilities.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's more so food for thought, if you see something on the exam that's like, um, you know, Jessie is graduating from high school, she has dual diagnosis and her IEP states blah, 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 and you're like, dual diagnosis, how'd she graduate from high? Well, it's possible to graduate from high school with a, you know, sub- substance use disorder, but just food. I was just saying food for thought, that if you see something like that, it could mean also something else. just food, I was just saying food for thought that if you see something like that, it could mean also something else.
Then you never know what they're gonna put on the exam.
But but it's good, it's good Sunday thing about, because when we go on Sunday, we we can come up with some of the rehab questions based off this stuff here. That's what we do on Sundays, by the way. Anyways, I I didn't mean to take too much away from Andrew, but I was just curious about that too. Good to hear from some of the experts here. So, all right, I'll let you continue.
Yeah, no, you're fine. It gives me a break anyways from from talking in a row. So uh the next section that we'll be discussing is evidence.
I could always, Andrew, I could always take over for you. It's just reading verbatim. So let me know.
Yeah, no worries. I appreciate Emily, but I'll be fine. I'm trying not to read out the slides, but yeah, it's it's hard not to. Uh the, so the next section I'll be talking about is the evidence-based practice interventions for clinical issues. This is going to uh cover um eye movement, uh desensitization, reprocessing, um SIT for post-traumatic stress disorder, uh trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, and evidence-based practice, uh counseling and therapy for substance use disorders, also motivational training.
Also, I think you split this half and half too, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I, uh huh, go for it, Emily.
Evidence-based pro- uh evidence-based um programs are there specific ones that are earmarked for specific
Is it just me?
Treatments? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Emily. I'm I'm sorry, you're.
I'm curious as to, is there a limitation? What evidence-based programs you can use for each one of, for a um case? Do you have to use the ones that are suggested? Or are there other evidence-based programs that are not mentioned here?
Yeah, there, there are other ones. And at the end of the evidence-based practice discussion, uh I touched slightly, it's just one slide's worth, but I talked about the limitations of evidence-based practice. I I'm not covering all the evidence-based practices out there. These are predominantly the most well-known for each area uh that you may find a rehab counselor in, but there's, I'm sure hundreds of um evidence-based practices out there that you and I have never even heard of.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
It real quick, Rose, I saw you were unmuted. Uh did you want something to say or ask a question?
Oh, yeah, no, I couldn't hear Emily. There was sometimes she was going on and off, uh but then she came back, but yeah.
Okay.
I think I was, yeah.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. So if you don't have any other questions, we'll move on to the next slide. So eye movement, desensitization, reprocessing, um is specifically for reprocessing uh post-traumatic stress disorder-related memories or traumatic memories. And uh they do so by using external stimuli uh such as a finger and waving it back and forth in front of your eyes. Um it's a pretty neat process and it's been known to be pretty effective too. Um so if you haven't seen how uh EMDR is conducted, I'd I'd recommend taking a look into it. It's it's kind of cool. And there's some YouTube videos out there that kind of explain uh the process of it. But like I said, it's taking a fractured memory and essentially reprocessing it so it gets stored correctly within uh the right section of the brain. So the sit for PTSD is known as stress inoculation therapy. Uh it's a cognitive emotional processing technique, so they use um cognitive uh principles, um but it's similar to EMDR um where it's treating. I don't know if I want necessarily say treating, but addressing uh traumatic memories. Um so it's oftentimes used for individuals with PTSD or high anxiety leveled uh disorders. Next slide. Trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy is a shorter-term intervention. This was uh specifically made for children uh adolescents um who had experienced traumatic uh experiences, but it is now predominantly for parents of children who have experienced um traumatic events. It's in a way psychoeducation, but therapy. So with or for understanding children's trauma. Next slide. Oh, thank you. So substance use disorders counseling, um outpatient, we kind of touched on that earlier when discussing uh support groups, inpatient programs and residential treatment facilities. Um I can't remember if I made a slide on each one of these or not. Uh we could talk a little bit about each one if anyone's interested. Um, I think the important thing to note here though is users are more um are more likely to reduce use uh in a program that encourages uh reducing their use instead of requiring uh absence. So some programs require their clients to be completely um absent from medic- or from their uh substance use and they have no toleration. So obviously, if a client breaks that rule, they're kicked out of the program. But evidence shows that programs that don't require that absence of substance use uh are more effective than a program that would require the absence. Does that make sense? Is that clear? Okay, next slide. And motivational interviewing is also um well-known within uh interventions for clinical issues. Um it was, it's a popular method that was made. It was a method that was popular in healthcare settings for addressing addictions, mental health and other chronic health conditions. It requires, or I'm sorry, uh so yeah, you need to, it's required that behavioral change. I'm sorry, it's required for behave, behavior to change uh to improve the outcomes. Motivational enhancement therapy is a well-known um evidence-based practice for motivational interviewing. Uh it's structured intervention based on uh motivational interviewing principles. And it was designed to help individuals work through their ambivalence about engaging in treatment and stop their substance use. And then this is what I was talking to Emily about with the limitations. So there is no entity uh that necessarily oversees what the best evidence-based practice is. Because we're all, we're all different and we all require different sorts of treatments. So um because there is no specific organization that, you know, can uh point to each case and say, this is the best solution for this um, this specific client. It's considered a limitation. Um and then there's also a limitation with actual evidence or actual research evidence to practice. We, 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 we could hope that the resources that we're referring to um are obviously beneficial, but uh because we don't actually know, it's, it's considered a limitation. So those are just some evidence-based practice limitations for you. I think this is where you start, Kennedy.
I do. And first of all, just I appreciate it, Andrew. I didn't realize you had a big chunk there. If I wouldn't have known, that would have helped you split off a little bit half and half, but I thank you so much. You did great. Uh another thing to, and another thing too, I want to mention about evidence-based practice. It's just a, it's just an umbrella term for what justifies us to provide services as a rehabilitation counselor. And as we know, traditional Western, and I guess I'm gonna play it, uh white European-based practices, so a lot of it started in Europe. So in this next section here, we're gonna go a little more into details about different counseling theories. And again, these are theories, but a lot of them ti- a lot of times, the stuff that's mentioned here are backed by science. They're backed by research, they're backed by quantitative data, qualitative data, and they have uh significant evidence. That's why we do use those practices. And like Andrew was saying, there's no really one right way to approach a client, because this client has this unique needs. But you as a counselor should learn to adopt other types of theories that's gonna help work with that person. So just, I I figured this one add into that. So with that being based here, you know, and again, you know, you were talking about evidence-based practice. Now we're gonna go specifically into the theories of this. So the next session, when he talked about, they discussed about the clinical decision-making and treatment planning for clinical problems. So when we do the problem-solving skills as rehab counselors, as case managers, as intakes, whether you're doing insurance, whether you're doing uh uh trying to get somebody a job, you're always gonna do some of the basic stuff, and that's the intake, the assessment, case conceptualization and treatment planning. Sometimes we don't call it treatment plan. Sometimes we call it the employability plan. Sometimes we call it the rehabilitation plan. It's still a plan. But these are the principles that we usually take from beginning to end. So with that, in the clinical decision-making, it's defined as the application of evidence that takes into account the counselor's clinical expertise and the needs of their clients. So the more you know, the more experience you get working in the field, the better you're going to be. With that, uh there's also the other theory of this, which is called the dual processing theory.
I have a question. Sorry, can you go back a little bit?
Yes.
Um, so can you, can someone remind me about case consta- case conceptualization? I know I'm aware about intake assessment and the treatment plan.
I can tell you about case conceptualization if you want. So case conceptualization is looking at a case, you know, getting referral paperwork or intake paperwork or any kind of past paperwork uh application, medical records, uh psychological reports, whatever it is, and conceptualizing the case, meaning looking at all the different contextual factors of this person, their history, their culture, their background, their um, you know, different identities, whether it's race, culture, ethnicity, gender identity, all these different things which play a part in their worldview, how they view the world, how they participate in the world. Um, and how their uh disability has manifested in their life, how it's impacted them in their life and how they um, and what that means for them to receive service. Um so you're just basically looking at this person in in their entirety to uh conceptualize the case, you know, get a, get a concept about who this person is, what they would benefit from, based on history. Um, you know, what we can offer other services. Um, how can we best benefit this person based on all of this information that we have or just the information we have, but maybe we don't have a lot of information, right? Um, so then it would just be, you know, doing the best with what we have um available to us in terms of who this person is. That makes sense.
Awesome. Thank you so much. That's so helpful. Thank you.
I think I want to add that it's very important for us as you, you, as counselors to really understand what she just explained. Margaret did a great job in explaining. Because we do um encounter situations where we are gonna be referring these uh our, our clients to uh shelters and sometimes, you know, we, the shelters are offering um assistance are religious shelters. And it's very important that we understand, we, we are gonna be dealing with people that aren't always religious or they're not gonna agree with that specific church. So that, that's just a little bit that I wanted to touch up and into was one of the subjects that was brought up in one of my classes. And um, great job, Margaret. It was, you did great.
Yes, all those little, those little concepts, like Gabby said, well, big concepts, you know, if, what services are going to best benefit this person based on uh certain considerations, cultural considerations um and other things that uh make up their identity. Um, and being aware of that, being conscious of that, knowing what our resources are in different pockets or different communities to be able to best refer people.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, guys.
All three of you, thank you so much. Um, pretty much on point there and I, I really appreciate that too, because it, that is a very simple to go away. I think we talked a little bit more about that in the slides here, but that's, that is the overall process. So, thank you. Uh, any other questions on this slide? No, okay. So the other part too is, this is really talking about your experience or expertise as a counselor. Uh so when we're doing our assessments, using these principles here, when we're doing a conceptualization, uh we have one processing where it's intuitive, fast, effortless and experienced, meaning you've been doing it for a while, you know what you're doing. So for instance, I've been working on my job for a year now. I do my individual plan of employment, but as long as I know what the, what the intention is for that person coming in for, I already know, well, I can do X, Y, and Z for this person. I don't have to think much into it. Now, if I have a unique reason, say for instance, a person has a significant disability, they are homeless, uh they're coming to the room because they need assistance with, that's gonna make me be a little more careful, a little more methodical, uh think about rational the information and, and is it gonna be time-consuming or is it gonna be complex? Am I gonna need to bring my supervisor in? Might need to bring my coworkers in to come with a plan? So those are how we, you know, in, in a theory of information processing, that's basically us as rehab counselors when we're dealing with clients. You're gonna have stuff that you know and you're gonna have stuff that you don't know. Uh with that too, uh when we refer to the, in the, in the self, the treatment plans, the treatment plans again are the things that we're gonna intervene and what we're gonna do to help get this person to the next stage as a counselor. So with that, or just simply put, it's a roadmap just like the individual employment plan, or they used to call it the individual plan of employment. In federal, they still call it the individual written rehabilitation plan or IWRP, if you remember from the last lecture, uh and so forth. Uh with that too, in the treatment plan, we're looking at what's gonna be the additional services. So in my understanding, the rehab counselor, I would say we're a little, sometimes a more in the later aspect. By the time the clients come to us and they're, they're pretty much looking for employment, they should have already gotten with a counselor, a social worker, they should have had a psychiatry diagnosis uh so forth, you know, dealing with that. And we're in the later part saying, well, let's try to help them get a job. Not all, not all the time depends on your job situations, but we also need to know, you know, what's gonna be best for this person? Are they gonna be going in and out of a, of a halfway house? Um are they, do they have a stable living environment? Are they coming out of the, the rehab center? Uh, who's also gonna provide services? Are you gonna refer it into another CRC? A s- a licensed prac- a licensed practitioner, so forth. Uh with that, you could, you're also gonna be looking at, you know, the housing services. Uh do they need HUD? Are they on HUD? Does the person need childcare services of taking care of their child while they're going to work? Uh with that too, you know, is it gonna be just an individual and I wanted to deal with them, a group counseling? And of course, in its uh major significant interventions like crisis. So with that, uh when we do these treatment plans, uh as a general principle, according to the textbook and according to rehabilitation counselors, it need to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant or smart-based goals. And if you're not good at doing it, I would definitely recommend getting with your supervisor and your coworkers to have experience. In my work setting, I have a coworker and a manager that we've been working there for around the same time and they switch off between manager roles and they've been doing it for over twenty years. And if I have something that I'm not just showing to be able to help, you bet I'm gonna go talk with them first. To say, hey, in this situation, what would you recommend? You know, how can we achieve it? You know, what's my timeframe that I have to work with that client? So, uh this is just, that's just how we split it this out. So don't worry about that. So with that, you know, when we're doing a treatment plan or when we're doing interventions, you know, we, again, we are also counselors. We are also counselors in here. And so the more contemporary approaches that are used today in modern rehabilitation counseling services or general counseling services is some of the stuff that Andrew mentioned earlier. Uh you see, you still see a lot of CBT practices or cognitive behavior therapies. You see solution-focused brief therapies. My favorite is motivational interviewing. I don't just use it for people with substance use disorder. I use it with just about anybody because it's a great way to get people to open up to talk, in my opinion. Multicultural counseling and the empowerment counseling approach. And we're gonna break that in, in here very shortly. So and I'm gonna read this slide. This here is the slide by slide. So the solution both focused brief therapy as a counselor, it's based on constructivism theory, meaning it assumes that the information does not exist separate from the subjective socio-cultural self or environment, meaning information Meaning information on the individual or what they need doesn't just exist outside of itself. Uh, the, it takes a standpoint that people are healthy and capable with their own internal abilities to formulate their own solutions to their problems. In other words, people know the answer to it, but they're so conditioned to expect to hear from somebody else's voice. Rather than think, oh, maybe I should do X, Y and Z. But they know the answer, they might just wanna hear from somebody else. A lot of times, you know your habits and what you don't like to do, you know what you should do, but do you do it? You have the ability to change it. Uh, with that, uh, clients recreate themselves and change their worldviews and alter behaviors. To experience a more satisfying life. The goal is to work with them to give them a different perspective to improve themselves or improve their quality of life. Uh, it's also time limited, meaning focus is to find positive solutions for resolving problems from within the individual and not what causes the limitations. To put this in a simple terms, uh, people are not defined by their disabilities or their limitations. They're, they're defined by what they're able to do and what they can contribute to society in this, in, in this particular viewpoint. Uh, also, the views are incremental behavior changes as most effective and efficient. For instance, I'm not gonna give a, a client that says, you know, as of tomorrow, you're completely able to do this job. You can hold it for an eight to five forty hours of work week and you're gonna be making a six-figure. A little ridiculous, you know, it takes time. You might have to do a step-by-step process to get them there. You have to understand your client as to which stage they're in, in their rehabilitation process. Uh, with that too, it talks, we talk about you opening the questions, coping questions, accepting questions, miracle questions. Scaling questions and relational questions. I would encourage you uh to read up about solutions-focused therapy and look at some of the questions. That can be asked, that you can use that if you want to implement this type of theory in your counseling style. Uh, any questions about this one? No, alright. Question. Now, my favorite one here, a motivational interviewing. It is my favorite. Uh, I, I was taught about it years ago. I've had plenty of refreshers on it. I'm like, I wanna say the guru, but I love it. Uh, it was developed by Ronald Miller as an alternative to the addiction treatments that focus on confrontation. I E rational emotive behavior therapy and cognitive behavior therapies. And we'll talk about that here later on when we talk about the more traditional approaches. Uh, with that, motivational interviewing is completely non-confrontational. The goal is not to get the person angry about doing a change. It's getting them to think about wanting to make the change and giving them the decision to say, you know what, I'm gonna take that step and make a change. Whether it's a change in their eating habits, substance use disorders, taking medications, going to that job interview on time. That's what we're talking about here. Uh, with that too, there's so, some of the things that they talk about is conflict versus ambivalence. I think I misspelled this. Reactance, uh, person-centered cognizance, self-determination, self-efficacies. Value theories, self-affirmation and strength-based approaches. So motivational interviewing encompasses multiple different theories into it. That makes it what it is. Uh, again, the goal of it is to develop a positive collaborative counseling relationship. That invokes reasons for change. And strengthens personal motivation. It requires a lot of empathy, not to be confused with sympathy. And with that, it's about being acceptance, affirming the positive attributes of things that they talk about, not focusing on the negative stuff. Identification of discrepancies, rolling with the resistance and facilitation of self-efficacies. So when we talk about rolling with resistance, I'm referring to like, you know what, on a scale of zero to ten, where zero is not at all a confidence. To ten is confident, how confident do you feel to make a change? Uh, and if they say a four or three and you say, okay, well, you said three, thinking about some of it, why not a zero? And they'll give a reason. That can help you gauge and say, is this person ready to, to make something and improve themselves or not? So if not, well, maybe we need to do some other interventions to get them to that point where they say, you know what, I'm ready for a nine out of ten and I want to change. Uh, with that too, the big key things in this approach is using open-ended questions. So it's not about a yes or a no. It's about affirmation. So you know, saying, hey, good job, you know, you, like you mentioned, you know, you were angry that day. Uh, you, you went ahead and you played some music on it and you helped relax yourself. And so that's a good way to, to cope with that. Uh, reflecting, which is actively listening to what they're saying and summarizing the point. But the end goal of it is, is not to bring a confrontation to them, is to avoid a confrontation. That's why a lot of the counselors, when they're dealing with crisis interventions, or if they're dealing with uh substance abuse. Uh, counseling or substance user, this actually is good. And exactly for groups from employment and change, thank you for sharing that, Sarah. That's awesome. Uh, my first, actually, my first experience to this was with a group of probation officers. Uh, that were getting into training for it and I was helping one of the, I was a research assistant for a master's student. And I just happened to get the free training and low and behold, it was for probation officers. And it was good. It's good, you know, it's just a different way to talk to people. Now, another one that's also, we consider contemporary, even though I should have been there for a while, is multicultural counseling. Uh, I just took this class last semester and to be honest, I struggled a lot with it, because it was hard for me to relate to other uh cultures and the city's identities. Um, but it was good, because it taught me about myself and my own personal bias. Okay. And what this is, is it's an alternative approach to traditional white-dominated counseling approaches. Designed for councils to be culturally sensitive to minorities. Now, when I refer to white-dominated counseling, I'm talking of like Adler, Piaget. Uh, Sigmund Freud, all the ones that are Europeans that created like psychology and therapies, majority of them were white Anglos. And they had a Western approach. When you come from an eastern background, like uh, let's say China, India, Indonesia, Africa, those places. You have an eastern view, which is completely different to the western thought, to approaches and stuff. So with that, uh, and mo- as a multicultural counselor, you take a pluralistic framework to address ethical and political commitments. To respecting, valuing and being inclusive. Like Margot was mentioning earlier, you have to be inclusive towards people of different cult. That's like conceptualization, the cultures, worldviews, values, beliefs, religions and identities. Uh, with that too, uh, counselors who are multiculturally competent, they understand their own biases. But they're still willing to help the other person, still willing to help work with them, understanding that, you know, in like some traditional Hispanic cultures. They may not see that somebody is schizophrenic. They may think, oh, and, and they're dealing with demons, those kind of things. And you have to work within their framework to help that person get through it, because it's a different approach than your tris- traditional Western. You know, i- I would really encourage you, if you really wanna get into it, definitely read up on it, because it'll, it's a, it's a good way to really like. Make an impact on people's lives. Uh, with that too, it also includes things like social justice, advocacies and activisms. Which they all aim to address the inequalities on minorities to reduce the make the negative oppressive behaviors from others, including counselors and personal bias. So for instance. Um, and anybody can open up and correct me here if I'm completely wrong with saying this and I really encourage it. In today's society. Me as a white Hispanic will not know what it is to have to tell my kids. That if, if let's say my children were, were black, for instance, that if you get pulled over by, by a police officer, what you should and shouldn't do. And how to approach in case something, I would never know how that feels. I have to tell my kids to say that unless I have those, unless, unless my children are minority. I would not know what it is to go and go into a store, go into a restaurant. And there's still some restaurants where they still won't serve you because you look darker than others. Those kind of things are addressed. Um, I won't know what it is, because I'm not a Muslim, that if I go to certain places, they're, they're gonna consider me. A, a, a haji and blow something up, because I'm, I'm going to a mosque. I will not know what that is. And so those are things we talk about advocacy is breaking those biases that we've developed over time, especially here in the West. And, and saying, no, you know what, these are individuals, they need care, don't label them as something in a society. So that's where the advocacy comes in. But I figured to share that. So if you think I'm wrong without me saying that, feel free to interrupt me and say, Kennedy, you're, all HSHs are wrong. Okay, it's not a problem.
I just wanted to add to what you were saying too. Um, cause all that I think is, is really, really correct. And I, I think where it plays a role when counseling as counselors. Is more times than not, we can be dismissive, because we haven't experienced it or because we aren't aware of it. Or be, you know, we can rationalize, we can minimize, or we could be dismissive. And I think that those three things are very dangerous to be as a counselor. Right? People wanna feel heard and seen and valued. That's why they're coming to us with whatever, you know, it is that they need. So um, definitely being aware, and even if you're not fully aware, open to learning, open to listening. Open to um, being, like me as a white person, uh, all the time, I'll be, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know enough on this topic. I need to learn more on this topic. Um, you know, uh, it's very important to. Admit that and um, you know, definitely not downplay or dismiss people's experiences just because you don't see them. Or agree with them, because of course you wouldn't, because you're coming from a different background, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And that's included, you know, like another thing too. Um, I, I'll give a good example. I was reading this when I was taking a multicultural class. A child who, uh, let's say they're Indian descent and they're going to predominantly all-white school. And they're like, it's her and just a couple of minorities there. And she's getting in constant trouble because they're arguing, uh, because they're constantly getting in arguings with the professors. Uh, when she goes to talk to the professors after the class, they say, you know what, you're not that smart enough. Uh, you're not like one of us. And then they go and they get suspended because they're angry about it. And then by the time they go get counseling. If the counselor doesn't have that multicultural, they're thinking, oh, well, then maybe she's just having uh anger issues, she's getting older, let's just give X, Y and Z interventions. Not realizing maybe she's being discriminated against at her school location because of her identity or because of her ethnicity. Those are the kinds, kind of things too, uh, that can be considered in rehab counseling. So think about it in terms of ableism. So being a, a minority and being disabled, are they gonna get the same treatment as somebody who's just disabled and not a minority? Those are the type of things that multicultural counseling, if you're not too sure about, I would encourage you to take a class in it and learn about it. Because in today's, when I was reading the textbook, and I think in the year twenty fifty, more than half the US population will be a mix of minorities. Will be a mixture of different ethnicities. We're not just gonna, it's not gonna be one predominantly uh ethnicity there. And we're, and if we are truly melting pot, we have to understand about people's uh, people's cultures, views and beliefs. So, thank, but thank you so much for inter- chiming in, Margaret. If anybody else wants to chime in about that, have an experience or anything, please share it. It's just gonna make us better too. You know, in addition to learning this stuff for CRC, it's also just good to learn this as individuals. Um, alright, so I don't wanna get too much off-topic. I know we still got quite a bit of slides to go. Uh, with that too, uh, in multicultural counseling, we as counselors have an ethical obligations uh with regards to. Uh, advocacy and accessibility. So with that, that goes into the detail here of our attitudinal barriers. Advocacy is in one owns agencies, because remember, sometimes you have to talk with your counselors or talk with other partnering agencies. Like if you work in a state but rehab, to make sure that your client's getting services from maybe SNAP, TANF or, or other additional benefits. Uh, collaborating with other entities, so employers. So believe it or not, there are some employers, there are recruiters that will blatantly hire people. Just because, oh, well, we need to make the numbers for their disability to read our numbers and not because of the individual. Um, one of my coworkers told me that she had a client that had a disability, bachelor's degree, extremely challenging to smart. And when they brought the recruiter into the interview for that position, he didn't wanna give it to him, uh, for the decision, simply because he was Hispanic. I kid you not, this, and I live in El Paso, it's simply because he was Hispanic and that, oh, well, he's old enough, he, he, he's usually should be doing X, Y and Z jobs. You know, even though he met qualifications. And he blatantly said that in the actual room with the other counselors. I, I, that company business lost all ties with us, that guy got fired, but because we stood up for him. Or they, uh, she stood up for them. Uh, with that too, knowledge and competencies, benefit systems, and of course confidentiality. We have to be advocates in it, because uh, it, who is it easier? I'll give an example. It, and I, and I say this, uh. Just from my own personal experience, sometimes it's easier for somebody to get into the government system for supportive services and benefits. Than it is with somebody who's been working for twenty-something years and has to fight and go get a lawyer to get into like social security. But I'm not gonna go there. Okay, with that too, when we talk about accessibility too, is making sure that accessibility with through counseling practice, barriers to access and referral accessibility too. But we, those are ethical obligations that we have as counselors to advocate for our clients. So with that, that touches here and what's called the empowerment counseling approach. Uh, this is another one of my favorites. Uh, this helps increase personal, interpersonal or political power to allow individuals to act and improve in their life situation. What that means is you as a counselor, don't, you don't really wanna have your client solely relying you for everything. When they start relying you for each and every little thing, like you're the Godsend Savior, it's gonna make things harder for you when things aren't going their way. What you wanna do is you wanna empower the individual to make that change or, or uh. Me the one to make the decisions at the end, because at the end of the day, it's about them, it's not about us. We get to go home with nothing on our end. They still get to go home with their situation, but they have to be willing to make the change. So with that, when you empower somebody, you're powering somebody with worth and dignity. And I capitalized the D for a reason. Uh, and they should have the same opportunity to maximize their potentials. Strive to grow and change in positive directions, and they are free to make personal decisions about managing their life. Uh, that goes with the old saying, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't force him to drink. And for the counselors. With that, again, like we mentioned earlier, you focus on the client's capabilities and capacities rather than their deficits or their limitations. So if you notice, they kinda all tying together as far as contemporary uh, uh, counseling approaches or evidence-based practices. Also too, some additional keynotes, again, we focus on strengths rather than deficits. Think about interacting with the person. We don't label and diagnose somebody. Um, even if you are certified to diagnose, we don't in rehab counseling. Uh, respect the client's rights to self-determination, so they make the decisions. Consider the person as a whole. Uh, respect skills and knowledge that clients have, because again, clients might come in already with that. Maybe they got injured at work and they can't do the same job anymore. Veterans, they have highly valuable skills, they just need to put in a different work setting. That's not gonna aggravate their disability. Uh, trust client is internally motivated to learn and direct their own lives. So, you know, if they're coming there for a reason for help and they're not forced to, that means they want to help. And you wanna help this person that wants to, that wants to help. And respect these persons' unique qualities, values and needs. Alright.
Alright, before I, what are you gonna say, Kennedy?
You go for it, Andrew.
Before I hop into humanistic approaches, I wanted to say on the empowerment counseling approach. My, my work has a really neat quote. No situation is. It's something along the lines of no. No situation is emergent. Uh, instead, they are urgent, or maybe it's flip-flop, but what it's trying to say is. Uh, unless the person is um, declaring they're going to harm themselves or others. Uh, there's no need to lose sleep over um, our clients' situations. Um, and I say that carefully, because I, I don't wanna make it sound like I don't care about my clients. And I'm not advising uh you to not care about your clients. What I'm trying to say is. We, we can only control. Uh, what they do with their situation um so much. And oftentimes, when they come to us. Uh, they make it seem like their situation is in emergency uh status. But oftentimes, once they, I guess, dump all this negativity uh on us. They already feel a lot better after the session is over. So. I guess, take that with a grain of as- assault, um. That not every situation is an emergency, so. Sorry, can't remember exactly the, the quote, but anyways, humanistic approaches. Uh, a humanistic um counselor would suggest that humans are fundamentally positive. And are constantly striving uh toward self-actualization, uh, meaning their own greatest potential. Within the humanistic approaches, we have person-centered theory, existential theory and default theory. I appreciate that, Sarah. Thank you. Alright, so person-centered theory or therapy is established by Carl Rogers. It's also known as Rogarian or client-centered theory or therapy. A humanistic counselor is uh aiming towards understanding the client's uh perception of the world. Um, as best they can and uh, the. And uh, the philosophy behind um, person-centered therapy is very present-focused. Um, we can incorporate the past into the present, but we're not referring to the past. Uh, in order to um, treat the present. The goal is to facilitate growth and movement towards self-actualization, uh. And the biggest uh, or the most critical or crucial role in person-centered therapy is self-concept. So, um. We wish, we wish to understand the client's self-concept as best as we can. And that is how we move forward in person-centered therapy. Uh, there's three components within the self-concept. We have self-image, self-esteem and ideal self, I believe on the next slide. Okay, well, there's three conditions that shape self-concept. Uh, genuineness. Counselor must be genuine, open and authentic during client counselor interactions. Unconditional positive regard, counselor's acceptance, caring and valuing of the client. And accurate and empathetic understanding, the counselor's ability to understand sensitivity and accurately. A client's uh, experiences and feelings. Alright, so next is existential theory. I personally like existential theory a lot, uh, when we learned about it. We were, it was taught to us, uh, in a way to. I guess, better understand the term existential crisis, so when you have an existential crisis. In a way, it, it benefits you because it's almost a jumpstart of anxiety. Uh, to get you moving in another direction. Um, similarly with. Well, where the term comes from existential uh, theory. An individual that is uh. Being counseled, counseled under this theory, uh, has the heavy topics of meaning of life. Um, death and other topics incorporated into the. Uh, therapy such as uh, life is finite. Um, we only have so much time on this earth, uh, so by including these different. Different topics, it increases the uh, awareness, um. And it also allows the client to regain control in their life. Uh, I would also. Looks like Kennedy's adding now here. But yeah, and then we can go on to the next slide. Did you have any questions on existential theory?
I believe, uh, yeah, I do, well, I don't know if it's a question, I just wanted to, um. Yeah, it is a question, uh, is, it, it means more or less you're allowing the client to take initiative on their own. On their own, right, so it's like their own existence, like what, what they're responsible for.
That is correct, yeah, so with, so with, with uh. Essentially like reminding you that uh. Life is finite, um. It may give you a boost of anxiety, uh, like, oh shoot, I only have so much time left on this earth. But in doing so, it also reminds you like. Hey, because life is finite, I better, you know, take life by the horn and horns and uh, you know. Uh, take control of what I can, so, right.
It's the Carpe Diem of theories, you know?
I like that.
Yeah, it's the sea is the day, today is the day, you know, um, it's time. Uh, you have the power to, the world's your oyster, seize the day, all those things, all these phrases, this is this. If you wanna be that kind of counselor, that's empowering in that way for. The person to take their responsibility and control of their own life, that's what this is uh. Saying.
So I, I have a question then, uh, or even just for the group, um, who do you think would benefit the most from existential theories?
I would say, um, maybe, um, uh, I, oh, oh, my gosh, a troubled youth. You know, you, they're in that transition where you can let them know, hey, the ball's in your, in the, in your court, you know, you set your. The path that you wanna take, you know, are you gonna take it here, up here, or are you gonna go down, are you gonna go up, are you gonna go down?
Yeah, I would agree with Gabby one hundred percent, I think that's, I think that's a great example of a population that would benefit from existential theory. Definitely.
I think, I think so many, I think even, I mean, depending on what you're looking at, right, if you're looking at, um. Like, um, mental health conditions, like let's say bipolar schizophrenia and med- medication adherence. Is a big issue, right, cuz that is the main issue with those two, um, diagnoses, um, that. Often is why relapse happens, you know, um, saying, you know, this is. This is your life, you know, how do you wanna live it? Um, you know, it's up to you, kinda prompting to have them see that. Um, it's their choices, taking their medication is what can lead to. Re- uh, rehabilitated life and in that same vein, I would say substance use disorder, a little bit. Little bit different, a little bit more tricky, there's a lot more wrenches thrown in for substance use disorder, it's not just, you don't just decide not to. Stop using and it's just like that, um, it's definitely a brain disease, it's definitely a lot bigger, but. Um, I think that this, you know, I think CBT or DVT combined with existential theory could be very empowering.
I, and I think those, those are conflicting, another thing I was thinking about when you were talking about this, Andrew, was, uh. Uh, those in the field of gerontology seniors, because a lot of them are near in the end. A lot of the uh, baby boomers, they're in retirement age and a lot of them, I'm seeing it right now in my workforce development. I'm seeing a lot of people in their fifties and their sixties, some of them even in their seventies coming to office because they're like. And I worked for twenty years and I don't know what to do with my life, I don't know what to do right now and it's like. Well, maybe you should go back to school and at this point, it's about you now, it's no longer about your company. About your position, your employees, it's about you now. And so I, I also see that this is very applicable to in uh, dealing with an older population. And cuz it's something we're gonna be faced with, cuz guess what, all the baby boomers are, are, most of ours should be our grandparents or parents. Um, so that might be something to think about as well. And that was a good discussion, thank you, I, I was just curious myself, like how we can apply this, so I appreciate all the input, thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, no, I appreciate those, uh. Those different groups that you guys suggested, I, I never considered the um, mental. Uh, health disorders such as schizophrenia and bipolar with their medications, but. Margaret, that was a great example, so yeah, thank you for that. Moving on, G-Soul Theory similar to uh, person-centered. Um, therapy, very uh, focused on here and now. Um, does not refer to the past, but will refer, or but will incorporate the past into the present. Um, if need be, uh. It unifies the whole, meaning the whole is uh, greater than parts, um. So it's, it's not just uh, thoughts or feelings, it's, it's the relationship between thoughts, feelings, perceptions. Mind, soul and sensations, um. It incorporates all those in trying to understand the individual opposed to trying to focus on one. At a time, uh, or just one specifically. I think that's the only slot I have on G-Soul, uh, I wish I would have had another one, G-Soul is interesting. Anyone have anything they'd like to add on G-Soul? It looks like Sarah had something to say about anger management.
Sarah, do, were you referring to anger management through G-Soul therapy or existential?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, to just like, I used this with anger management to figure out why someone was having anger and why I was doing domestic violence.
It was that through exist, oh, G-Soul, okay, cool. A- actually, I have a question here, when it says not looking to the past, but instead incorporating the past into the present, what does that mean? Cuz I honestly, I don't know.
So if you, if you were to be raised in an abusive uh, household. Um, and twenty years later, uh, you're in counseling, a G-Soul therapist. Would, they don't care at all about what happened in your past, they wanna focus on what's going on right now and. Uh, what, what in your environment is impacting that currently? Um, what are your thoughts currently, what are your behaviors currently? If you were to bring up your past on why you may experience uh, frustrations in this area or sadness in this area. Um, it may be discussed in the treatment moving forward, but um. Kind of behavioral therapy, for example, or other therapy may. Focus specifically on the past and say, I think, you know, you're experiencing frustrations and sadnesses. In this area because of your trauma from the past, where G-Soul Theory says, I don't wanna talk about your past, I wanna talk about the here and now. Does that make sense?
I got you, that, that makes sense, so I was just wondering, instead of incorporating the past into the present, okay, I got you. I think I'm up next now, aren't I? Yes, I am. Is this mine or yours?
This is you.
Okay. Alright, appreciate it, we've, we've worked, Andrew and I worked hand in hand on this together and I've kind of forgot whose was whose. But uh, the next three areas I'm gonna talk about and I'm gonna go through these kinda a little bit quickly. These are more traditional approaches, this is what I was talking about that are like opposite of motivation interviewing and opposite of the other. Uh, contemporary ones, the more traditional approaches, uh, so starting with that, we have the behavior therapy. Um, if most of you have done either word, LPC counselor, took psychology classes. Or rehab counseling, you should probably know who these are, you should know who Ivan Pavlov is, you should know who BF Skinner is. If you don't know, there are some amazing videos on YouTube that show you the, the Ivan Pavlov thing with the dogs or the constimulation. And it'll break it down into three minutes, it's pretty simple. The key note with this one here, like I say, if you were to see this in the CRC. I would think is I keep attention to determine how extinctions applied. And how the condition responses applied and what they're talking about on here, if I see something that's an unconditional stimulus. And an unconditional response, like for instance, uh, uh, like your dog, so when you. Uh, squeeze the ball, the ball. I make it easy, like if I wanna give my dog a T R A T, first, I have the T R A T in my hand and the dog smells and it salivates. Keeps doing that over and over, then I say T R A T, I don't wanna say it for work, she might, my dog might come here and run to me, does he want a treat? And then she gets the same exact response and I keep saying it over and over, eventually then when I say the word treat, she's gonna, she's gonna keep repeating that and keep. And get that conditioned response where if I say that word, she's gonna start salivating and want something. You know, now the unconditioned would be, or the unconditioned stimulus. Or something that you didn't really wanna include it into it would be, if I'm saying it at the same time, I'm holding a pen and now she looks at a pen and she starts salivating. Then so forth. Now, the opposite between Pavlov and Skinner, though, what I will say is that unlike Pavlov. He had to manually really manipulate the animal to condition or to, or to situation condition to warrant what they, what the response was. And opera conditioning, uh, it's manipulated through what's called positive reinforcement, negative reinforcement, which I would encourage you, if you don't know the difference between these three things. You need to take a look at it. It doesn't mean net punishment is a bad thing, doesn't mean a negative reinforcement is a bad thing, it's just how it's implemented. Easiest way to look at this, though, if you were to look at Skinner, understand how different uh, reinforcers are implemented, for instance. Continuous, so they continue to get any reward or continuously getting shock, continues to get a return, fixed interval, they come in at certain times, so. You know, at certain times of the day, you feel tired, you feel exhausted, fixed ratio is after every quarter. Uh, like say you get a paycheck once every two weeks, that's the easiest way I can say it, uh, variable interval. Um, if I'm saying that one correctly and please double check it in the textbook, please Google it, I might be wrong by saying this. Uh, in variable interview, it's like a slot machine, it is unpredictable. So like the big, the best BF Skinner box ever invented is a slot machine. Uh, when your babies are playing with those little, like if you have children and they're playing with those little toys on top and they're making things. Uh, making bells, whistles, noises and colors and stuff like that, and matter of speaking, that's a concept of Skinner box. Because if the child keeps continually doing it and it lists that response, then it's good, and then it could, it be extinct, so. Just keep in mind, when you look, when you, if you're in CRC, keep in mind of how the question's being asked, it's probably gonna give you a situation. And if they're talking about an unconditional response, an unconditional stimulus, you should immediately know that this is classical conditioning Pavlov. If they're talking about reinforcements, it's Skinner. That's the best way I can describe this here in simplest terms, any questions? Alright, next one, this one here, I took a class on it, I had to. Uh, it's not my favorite, but some people like it and the only ones I'm afraid is cuz this one, they say, they used to call it, they used to give people homework to do it. But now they call it action plans, it's the same thing, just rebranded, but it was made by Aaron and Judith Beck. And they use it as, and I mean, CBT is used in a lot of things. It's still popular today, it's used in many, many different things, but the idea is that it gets clients to teach them how to think. And how they can correct their faulty reasoning, so if, for instance, uh, somebody keeps constantly, um. I don't know, uh, keeps, that's a good example, uh. I have, I don't wanna give an example, I'm getting tired here, but I'll give it to you like this, if they wanna know why they're feeling the way they're feeling, you want them to use CBT. I can put it that way and make them challenged with the thing, so if they say, for instance, I'm a failure, I don't like myself, that, that, I suck at this. Well, why do you suck at this, what, what is making you think that way? That's what we're going into and you say, well, let's break it down and let's go behind why you think or why you felt the way you did, why did you. Uh, when somebody told you, you couldn't do that, you ended up punching them in the face, stuff, little, little things like that. So with that, though, it is a technique, it is, it's, you have to learn the techniques, it is an education approach. Uh, they use it a lot again with substance users, mental disorders and stuff like that, irrational thinking, we'll talk about that later. Uh, with that, though, it helps to identify distorted cognitions, monitor negative self-talk. Why are they saying what they're saying to themselves, identify the relationships, underlying beliefs and feelings and alternative thinking patterns. I, I'll give you even a fun example here, uh, people who are bipolar instead of medic may be grandiose or, or. Be in a state of euphoria where they're like, you know, I am God and I am this and that, well, why do you think you're God and this and that, you know? It's just an example, and when you identify those, the, the negative thoughts or the negative things that are talking about themselves, then. You challenge them to, uh. Counteract those thoughts with more factual thoughts, like, do you really believe what you believe? Why do you believe it, can you support it, can you disprove it, so it's basically applying scientific, in, in a way, you could say applying scientific theory through therapy. Cuz they develop a personalized hypothesis and they test the regarding validity of assumptions. Uh, another way I can easily say this too, it works great with people who have extreme thoughts or extremist views, you know? And they can get them to challenge that stuff if they're willing to change.
Yeah, can I just add something?
Please.
Um, so CBT also is, um. Comes behind, both CBT and DBT come behind, you have a thought, triggers an emotion, triggers an action. And the action, um, you know, isn't always good, like the, the example Kennedy gave, punch someone in the face, what. You know, you had a thought that stimulated an emotion and it's, which could stimulate an action, that could be unfavorable, so. It really is reframing and challenging your thoughts and realizing that, um. You know, what's impacting it, are you overgeneralizing, are you having negative self-talk, are you? Um, have black or white thinking, is it a cognitive distortion, is it? Uh, there's a lot of different phrases with CBT that your thought can, can lie, lie into and then, um. You know, you can, uh. You can reframe that thought, you know, what's the unthoughtful help, uh, what's the unhelpful thought that I'm having? Um, you know, what is my fear with this thought? You know, and then there's different ways that you can reframe it, there's a really cool app, you can, you know, as counselors, you can. Do it yourself, but also for uh, the people that we're supporting, it's called the Thought Diary and it's based off of CBT. The, the, the paid version, I paid for, for, I got a free trial and it was great and I was like, oh my gosh, I want this forever. And then it expired and I was like, ah, I still wish I had it, but the, the free version. Wish I had it, but the, the free version gives you the, you can analyze your thought.
I, if you can see it, I, I think I have it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the thought diary. It's, it's really, really good. And it. It prompts you, you know, what's the unhelp, like I was saying, parts of it, I haven't opened in a while, but it'll, uh. Um, that gives you like two or three free features. Um, it gives you like a journal prompt, I think, and it'll give you, um, like deconstructing your thought. So it's based off of CBT. It's really good.
So unlike motivational interviewing. Uh, CBT does use confrontation.
Yeah, right. Cause you're.
With, with self, yeah.
Yeah, with self. Uh, you're challenging, you're challenging your beliefs and your thoughts. So for every. Action, emotion that you do, there is a underlying thought. You may not realize it, but there's an underlying thought to it that's led you up.
It may or may not be true, right?
Yes.
The, that's the, uh, the, the big one. So for this one with analyzing thought, it says, what unhelpful thought do you have? Does your thought contain distortions? So distortions such as like. Catastrophizing. What if the worst happens? All or nothing thinking, I'm a total failure, emotional reasoning, I feel this way, so it must be true. Magnification of the negative, I totally ruined everything. Minimization of the positive, like there's so many. Um. And you could choose one. This is what the app and it says, how can you challenge your thought? And it gives you, um, examples. It'll say the benefit of thinking this way is. And then it says, you know, what is another way to think about this? A better way to look at it would be, and I've done it for myself in situations where. My thoughts were my perception, which fueled feelings that are only true to me. And I see it so clearly one way and this app has truly helped me to be like. No, it could just be that X Y Z, right? So.
So, so with, with CBT. We're challenging our thoughts to change our behaviors, but with behavioral therapy. We're coming up with ways to just ultimately change behavior through. Conditioning, is that?
Yeah.
You can say vision or through, uh. Through, through what?
Like an alternative.
Yeah, with an alternative view, thinking the bigger, like for instance. Why do some of us, when we drive, drive with road rage? What's the reason behind it? Why do we do that? Well, because the other day somebody cut me off into the same thing, so I'm gonna go do it to somebody else, you know? Something like that, you know, or because right now I realize I'm five minutes late to work because I didn't get up that early in the morning. And that's why I'm rushing to work. I'm cutting everybody off and giving everybody the bird, you know?
So if, so if you're, if you're late to work. And you were mad. CBT would say. Well, why? Why were you feeling mad? Where behavioral therapy would say. Let's change your behavior and maybe get up five minutes earlier. Is that correct?
The second part, yeah, the second part is true, but the first one, I, it, what I think is more, it's not so much, why are you mad? It's, it's more so like your thoughts. So it's, it's, I was late because I can't do anything right. And it's like, okay, but what else? Maybe you were late because you didn't set your, your alarm. And then what can you do in the future? And then you can add both of these together to get a solution. But it's not so, yeah, it's not so much what we're feeling. It's, it's the thoughts we have that are, you know, at times irrational, you know? Uh, my wife didn't wake me up because she hates me and she wants to divorce me. And it's like, whoa, where'd we, how'd we get there, right? But to that person, that's so clear. Or it could be that she had an early meeting or she, whatever, you know? It's trying to get people to reframe their thinking to be uh, less emotional and more rational.
Definitely. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
And let me just add in here too. CBT, this is the birth giver. To rational emotional behavior therapy to dialectic, dialectical behavior therapy. This is the original. So think of this like the OG. The OG of any sort of behavior therapy, in a matter of speaking, when it requires. To use those principles of CBT, this is OG. That's the best way to say it. Uh, it helped describe what and so forth. And then it's now applied, which in rehabilitation counseling, it's applied. Specifically like for rational emotive behavior therapy. That's where you talk about challenging the irrational thoughts. Okay, so this here gave concept to behavior therapy, which became very popular because it works. This is a touch off from cognitive behavior therapy. The only slight difference is that when we were talking about earlier about conflict, you're bringing, you're bringing conflict because you're challenging. Your irrational thinking like, uh, I lost the lottery today because everybody in the world hates me. For us, it's normal, like what's wrong with this person, you know, like, am I real? Um. Another thing would be, uh, nobody in my family loves me and they all hate me because. I'm not because they hate me, you know, well. Are you really sure that every single one of your individual family members that's raised you from birth to now hate you? Why do you think that way? Let's challenge that, you know, or you know, I'm going to the class today. I'm gonna fail. I'm gonna bomb this exam. I'm not gonna do good at all. Well, then let's take a step back and kind of figure that out. Is it true? Did you study, you know, so that's, so that's the difference between MI, MI is non-conflicting. Cause it gets just people to open dialogue. This here is conflicting because you're challenging those irrational extreme thoughts. And just like Margaret and everyone is putting there, so uh, does that make a little bit better sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, this is the therapy that uses the CBT. They're very similar.
Yep.
Right, that's.
This would be the, the. Type of therapy or the type of approach that would use CBT. CBT is the. Activity or is the concept or, or the therapy. And then this is just the. You know? The bigger umbrella that it falls under. It's a, it's a, um. I don't even know. It's, it's, CBT is the tool for the therapy.
CBT is what we got here. So think of this like. George Washington and then Abraham Lincoln. I'm just rubbing something there. Okay, but it goes, but there's different types. You have DBT, which if you look at job applications, you're asking for people experience a dialectical behavior therapy. You have to read it out what dialogue is, but it's still CBT. It's just a form of it, a modified towards whatever that particulars, uh, need.
Population.
Yes.
Need.
Yeah, usually trauma and borderline personality disorder.
Exactly.
For, for diet, for diet like.
For DBT dialectic behavioral therapy.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just an example, but ultimately though, uh, prevents. Irrational thought, basically the, the idea here is if they start hearing something about Albert Ellis. About rational irrational thought, you know, it's gonna be REBT. And you have to read this and I was, I would think that you would have to read the scenario. To understand how does this theory apply? What is its goals? What is REBT? Well, rational emotive behavioral therapy. It talks about rational versus irrational beliefs. And like what you, uh, what Margaret was talking about earlier, you can read, study the slide on your own, but there it is. Actually leave have consequences. Let's figure out before we. Let's figure out before we got to the consequences, what was happening in between. How my psychologist once told me, like that's how did it happen in between? And then once you kind of figure out what happened in between it. You disputed and say, well, what I'm gonna do next time? Well, instead of punching the guy in the face, instead I'm gonna hold my breath for about five seconds. Squeeze my hands and fists and slam the ground instead of punch him in the face. I don't have anger issues, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and something else that is useful for remembering this. Uh, these theories and these therapies and these is, um. It's, uh. I, I tell people just to phrase it in, you know, the story that I'm telling myself is. Right? So something happened at work. You know, I think that my coworkers are, you know, so instead of me going, you know, my coworkers are talking about me or I think you guys are talking about. The story I'm telling myself. Is that? My coworkers are talking about me, right? Cause it, it makes it, it draws. The situation away from being truth or reality, because we could sometimes say things like it's true because they feel true. But really, it's, it's what we're telling ourselves sometimes. Our perception, like if you go back to that, that uh, slide before Kennedy. Um. You know, it's, um. Uh, events, incidents or adversities themselves, not leads to emotional difficulties, but irrational beliefs. Um. Do, and then if you even go back up, I think it was in the CBT one. And I'll be quiet because I know we gotta move on. But, um. Yeah, so emotional behavioral consequences are a result of cognitive faulty thinking. So, um, what am I telling myself? You know, what the story that I'm telling myself is, dot, dot, dot. Cause it's not, might not be true. It could be just a story and it's a story that I'm telling me. If that makes sense.
So just. Just to confirm. All. Uh, once I get a scroll down, all uh, REBT sessions. Are CBT, but not all CBT sessions are EBT. Or RE, REE.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think that you can. Choose to deliver CBT without calling it. You might be delivering REBT or, you know, yeah, REBT.
I, I think I can address that better.
Yeah.
For anybody to do any sort of behavior therapy, whether it's dialectic, dialectical behavior therapy, whether it's, uh. Crisis intervention behavior therapy, rational emotive behavior therapy, all had to have a foundation of cognitive behavioral therapy. You cannot provide these additional therapies without having a foundation in understanding CBT in general. So in order for you to administer and implement REBT, you have to have a foundation of cognitive CBT.
Gotcha.
So all additional forms of behavior therapy derive from CBT. And I took a class on CBT, that's why.
It, it just throws me off because cognitive distorted cognitions to me. Is this like another way of sa- saying irrational thoughts?
That's exactly what it is.
So then I, I get confused when we go to rational emotive or emotive behavioral therapy. And they talk about irrational thoughts being. The, the goal for changing.
Well, keep in mind, there's a difference between a thought. And belief. And a value. Because if I believe that the spaghetti monster is the almighty powerful monster within the whole world, that's, that's, uh. Inopotent or what is it? In omnipotent and all that kind of stuff. And I'm going to a Christian center, uh, there's something, I have a very bad irrational belief, right? I mean, it just kind of put, put some little humor to that.
Right. So. Okay, so, so REBT is. Irrational and rational thoughts specifically where the principles. Underlying cognitive behavioral therapy include thoughts, beliefs and feelings.
Yes.
Okay.
Says. And in foundation, we're saying thoughts, beliefs and feelings.
Gotcha.
This.
Yeah, no, I, I was just gonna say, cause while Andrew is speaking, I, I was understanding what it was that he was saying. Cause I was like, oh, that makes sense. So if you go, if you go to slide seventy-five with the chain of events and the, where you should intervene. Right? Um, I think we're C, CBT is challenging the thought and understanding the thought. This brings in, because you know, a, an extra level to it or an extra element to it. Of not just challenging our thoughts, but choosing something differently, where it diverges down to D. So CBT is the idea of like, not all of our thoughts are true, not all of our thoughts are real. But at the same time, I may have this thought. I may have this, which triggers a feeling, which triggers a behavior and the behavior is over. And now I'm just challenging my thoughts. And the damage is done. Whereas this therapy. Is meant to be preventative because it utilizes uh, CBT, but there's the added element of branching, like skewing from the timeline. You know, if this is like Back to the Future, so here, this is gonna be the chain of events, but we're gonna skew. We don't want that to happen. So we're gonna come down to D. And that's where we dispute and challenge, and then we choose something differently.
Okay.
This is like the proactive version.
Preventative.
Which CBT is just saying, hey, shitty thoughts happen. We have to challenge these thoughts, right? Because they might not be true. But then, then what, right? Choosing something different. It's the whole. Pe- whole pie.
Okay, so in a way, it's, it's preventative care. Uh, in CBT, in a form of CBT.
Yes. Uh, anyway, so, and it, does anybody else have any thoughts or perception or they want to chime in? From the audience that's listening, because I know we're having an intense conversation here, so it's always gonna have additional input. No? They're like, it's almost time for, we're, we're tired. We're almost tired. We're just about done though, but this is good.
I apologize everyone for, uh, talking. Thankfully, we only have nine more slides, so we'll. We'll wrap it up for, for everyone here.
Yeah, actually, I think you start from here, don't you? So, but no, th- this is good. So if I were you, um, uh, as you're studying it, make sure you kind of understand a slight difference between the CBT and REBT. Uh, like I think like what Margaret said, REBT takes it one step further to replace the thought with something else. As CBT, just the understands the, the relationships among those underlying beliefs, why we think we, we do. And in kind of maybe challenge a couple of things, but this takes it a step further to say, no, let's do it. So, all right, go ahead and take it from here.
All right, three factor approach, uh. Human, or human behavior is identified as traits that are integrated to form cha- characteristics called factors. Uh, this is an approach that was designed for university students. Uh, still implemented on universities. Um, it's. It's assessments. Uh, that help identify traits. Um, aptitude tests, uh. Skill tests or skill assessment tests, uh, these sorts of things to help identify possible career. Uh, careers. For individuals based off these. Different factors. Uh, Minnesota Theory of Work Advancement is a form of trait factor approach. Um, this was designed to determine job status. Acturiness. Which is the extent of which the person is able to perform the job. In nineteen ninety or nineteen ninety, person-centered traits evolved into person and environment. In predicting behavior, so, uh, before nineteen ninety. Uh, these sort of. Uh, assessments or these, these, the thought behind these assessments was very person-centered trait specific. Um. Where now after nineteen ninety, they have become. Person and environment. Uh, these are now known as P and E models. Meaning person and environment. So essentially, they take in your, your traits. And they also consider the environment. Um. And determining what type of career may be most beneficial for you to work in. Again, this is a form of a trait factor. Approach assessment. So this, these are, these are different skill, uh, attitude. Um, ability assessment. So. Yeah, so psychodynamic theories. Psychodynamic is striving for pleasure and avoiding pain. Uh, these types of theories. Uh. Include Freud's psychoanalytic drive theory. Ego psychology, object relations theory and individual psychology. And go to the next slide. So Freud's. Uh, go up one more, Kennedy. There you go. But psychoanalytic drive theory is the well-known, well-known uh, theory by Sigmund Freud that includes the. Um, ID. Ego and the superego. Uh, we'll talk about the three on the next. Uh, slide, but it's based on. It's based on a sexual and aggressive urges. Um. The psychosexual stages. Also known as the anal. Uh, phallic latency and genital stages. Um. A site, it's, psychological struggles are signif- significant and individual may get stuck or fixated on a, a stage. To avoid pain. Defense mechanisms are used to bury pain into unconsciousness. Um. When, when someone gets stuck into a stage. Uh, it can manifest in variety of. Variety of different ways. Um, aggression is oftentimes displayed. Uh. But projection, repression, rationalization, sublimation. Reaction formation, regression. And compensation are other examples as well. The goal of this theory is to work through repressed memories. And repair or remove unhealthy defense mechanisms. Um. The primary focus is to bring the unconscious forward and work through it. So the. ID and ego and superego, uh, that are incorporated in this, uh, theory. Um, this is something that I would expect us needed to know, needing to know. So I thought it'd be beneficial to add a separate slide on the three. The ID is the. The I D is the, uh, is the base principle. Um. That Freud, uh, determined. Being pleasured by hunger, sleeping and sex, uh, it's our basic needs. Uh, our ego, which is, uh, developed later on, uh, from our I D. Ensures that the impulses of our I D can be expressed in a manner acceptable in a, in the real world. It also serves to mediate between I D and su- superego and our superego strategy is perfect. And as a person's moralistic component, so. I like to use the example, when I was learning about this, uh, the I D. Um, because hunger is a basic need of mine. Whenever I'm hungry, I don't just go to the store and steal, steal, steal to satisfy my hunger need. Because my ego determines that's not acceptable, uh, for me to do. It's not an acceptable behavior. Um, in the real world. Uh, likewise, my superego isn't stopping me. Uh, from starving myself because I want to follow, uh, the moral. Um. Moral law of society to a T and never steal. So if it were to come to a point of starvation, um. My superego. It, if my superego was in charge, uh, I would die of starvation because I wouldn't go through the steps of stealing. Um, to survive, where. With all three, the ego balances the I D and superego, if that makes sense. Is that clear? Did I?
You, you pretty much are on point, and we call it the id.
Okay.
You're good, though.
I appreciate it, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next slide. Um. So this is ego psychology. Uh, instead of the three-part structure of the mind. Um, ego specifically focuses on the ego. Uh. They focus on strengthening the ego to facilitate reality testing, impulse control, judgment. Uh, affect, regulation and defense, so. Uh, it, it removes the id and superego as being, um. As. Uh, I guess. Important, I don't wanna say important, but they just prioritize the ego with putting the ego, um. Number one, I guess, is the primary source, so. We go to the next slide, there you go. Uh, object relations theory. Our view of self and others are dependent on the relationships exposed to us at birth. Um. So if you were, uh. If you were. So object relations theory would say that if you were raised in a violent household. Um. You would learn at a young age that you are not worth. Um, of being loved. And when you. Later on in life, when you, uh, became an adult. You would be more likely to find yourself in a similar relationship that you were exposed to. Um, growing up. Uh, and you would also. You are also more likely to, uh. Mirror the behavior that you're exposed to as well, and that goes for both ways, that goes for both negative nurtured. And positive nurtured behavior. Yeah, I'll go to the next slide. I think this is last one, individual psychology founded by Alfred Adler. Um. Is. Uh, the belief that humans are motivated by socialization, we as humans, um. Uh, have a sense of belonging, uh, and that's what motivates us to, um. Move forward with goals and, uh, life and work. Um, social interest is driven by an innate capacity and desire for communion with others and formed through early life experiences and socialization. Um, yeah, Kennedy, that is correct. We have two slides left, I apologize, but that is it for my portion, so, thank you.
No problem, appreciate it, so. He take away, uh, reading, I sent, if you were here last week, I sent this all to you, so you should have a copy of this, but if not, I can send it to you, uh, tomorrow. Uh, but another thing too, I know we talked about human growth and development. And the only thing I'm gonna say, according for the C R C, they only mentioned about Erickson and there's eight stages. Uh, with that, it goes from infancy to end of life, so if anybody remembers Piaget, has four stages from birth to adolescence. Erickson took it way further for the whole lifespan. And you as a rehab counselor need to understand where an individual may be, both in their minds and physically. Uh, and where they might be at the stage, so I think these stages are, if I'm not mistaken, they're not permanent, they just in there. Another thing would be like adolescence, transition to youth stages and how their adulthood and their body is gonna be affected over lifetime. Especially people with chronic disabilities, that's why it's important to understand the lives and the human growth, the life stages. Uh, one thing too, last thing, when it comes to any sort of counseling setting that you provide with a client for services and assessment, the biggest important thing too is termination. Uh, so I would encourage you to read this. About the conditions of terminations, because I'm sure that will probably be mentioned on a C R C, could be mentioned on a C R C exam, how you terminate, whether it's a group or an individual. Uh, with that too, what are the conditions? Say, you know what, we don't longer need to continue counseling sessions, like for me, one stack. From once my client obtains a job and finds employment, I exit him out, I say, congratulations, you did amazing, we took care of you. Go, good luck on your future endeavors, and that's it, you know? Uh, and also Gabby sent a leak, uh, uh, a mock C R C exam, but it doesn't have the answers. Whether it's studies, I have examples through Gmail, so with that, um, Gabby. If I can, I'll forward it to the group of people here in the shared drive.
Yes, that's great, yeah, um, like I said, the, the mock C R C C does not have the answers, it's just something that was provided actually from a. A student who took the C R C C, so I don't know how accurate this exam is, and it's probably like maybe a year old. Um, but, um, it's, it was very helpful, um, the practice exam was extremely helpful and the study guide. Um, the, all the questions in there were, were in my, in my, in my exam, so. Uh, something just to look at.
Yeah, and would, and on Sunday, we're gonna probably use that. Use that and, and focus on some of the stuff we talked about too.
Yes, it's gold.
Yeah, so I'll send that out too. Uh, so with that, uh, this pretty much concludes today's sessions, uh, we went just a minute over. But I would like to say for everybody here, thank you so much for coming. If this is your first time coming here, uh, please leave me your email address, I'll, I'll include you in the shared drive. When I record these, I upload it to, uh, YouTube, but it's not public. I will post the link down, uh, I think, I'll post a link in here. About lecture one, lecture two, lecture three, so only those who are participating have access to that, so it's not gonna be everybody and everyone, it's for those here. Who have the access to the shared drive can have this. Uh, with that, the next person is gonna be teaching or is gonna be sharing a little bit is Raja, and she's gonna be doing a human growth. Our group and family counseling, because that's the next topic on C R C, so I'll send that out tomorrow. It's like that, everybody gets the copy of it from this book, which is the third examination, but if you have first and second version edition, that's fine too. Um, and with that, uh, she'll be the one to share with a little bit on that, uh, share a little bit on that section there. So with that. Yeah, Risha, did you wanna say something?
Oh, no, I'm just saying, yes, I will have it ready.
Yeah, and I can help you out too, so I don't think you're gonna be doing this, so I'm, I'm helping too, because as I'm doing this, I'm learning as well. But, thank you, everybody. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you all, this was great.
This is long, but this is good.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and get everything sent out, so like that, you all get copies of everything in shared drive and I'll, I'll. After we do our Sunday thing, which by the way, in Sundays, when we do the quiz practices, they're not recorded, so if you miss it, you miss it. Oh, and that's just because in case there is somebody here from C R C board, somebody comes over to C R C board, I don't want them thinking we're trying to cheat or something, you know? And maybe ask your questions for the next group, so I'd rather keep it unrecorded, it just goes straight into it, so.
What time is that on Sunday?
Same time as here, seven o'clock, except, except it won't be two hours. This lecture was two hours, but that's an hour and a half and that's it.
Okay.
So every Sundays and Thursdays, we meet at seven P M. Mountain Standard Time, nine P M. Eastern Standard Time. Uh, six P M. Pacific Standard Time, eight P M. Central Standard Time. I try to do it after dinner hours. I, if, if we need a shift later, we can, but it's every Sundays and Thursdays. And if this, and if this be continues to be a good thing, and let's say this pays off for us in March. And we get a lot of us passing, and then if it pays off a lot for us, you know, in July, we'll keep going with this, why not?
Yeah.
You know? Nice to meet everybody, you have a wonderful, blissful, wonderful night, stay safe and, uh, I'll talk to you soon. I'm gonna go ahead and send the shared drive out, take care.
Take care.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, bye.
Thank you, bye bye.